We convene our meeting to open session. We've been in executive session since 6:10 to discuss some personnel matters and tenure recommendations. We could all stand at the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could have introductions.
Dave Erst.
Chris Meyer.
Wendy Sampson.
Christine Beck.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbach.
Meredith Marini.
Willow Bear.
Jonathan Fishpine.
And Juliet Eagle.
Thank you very much to Eagle for hosting us today. Do we have any PIG students with us? Welcome. You guys have an obligation to stay until nine o'clock or until the meeting is over, whichever comes first. And when it is done, there are sign-out sheets up here, and if you need a signature, you can see any board member for a signature if you have another piece of paper. First up on the agenda, minutes of our last board meeting. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the October 16th, 2019 Board of Education meeting.
So.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Reports? Do we have anyone here tonight from the Student Senate? You want to come on up to the microphone?
This week, we voted on some clubs. We voted on a French Honor Society and Hacky Sack Club. Tomorrow, we'll be voting on Philosophy Club and Fashion Club. We also just got approved to have a shuttle from the back seat lot from Cherry for many juniors who didn't get a parking spot, and most of Van Dyke gets filled because of most of the construction workers parked there. So that will be starting Friday, and that leaves at 7:22, but we recommend for students to get there at 7:20 so they can make the bus. We want to get this started now, just before winter and the snow, just so kids don't have to be walking through construction by all the vehicles, by the baseball fields. Friday, we have our second annual Veterans Day Ceremony in the morning, so any veterans that anyone knows, we would like them to come by and stop by so they can be honored. That's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Next, I think we have some representatives from Eagle who are here with us tonight to report on something that's going on at Eagle.
Hi. My name's Elliot, and this is Gabe, Miles, Aditya, Anna, and Spencer. We're all cooperating together to fundraise money for freshwater for Sudan.
We have been working in our freshwater science unit and learning that there's not as much clean water as we thought there was. Only 3% of all water on this earth is freshwater. That's not a lot. So we really have to be conservative on how we use our water daily.
The fifth graders are reading A Long Walk to Water by Linda Sue Park, which tells the story of two characters, Salva, who lived in southern Sudan in 1985, and Naya, who lived in southern Sudan 2008. Eventually, their stories overlap. Naya is a fictional character who had to walk eight hours a day for only a little bit of dirty water. A lot of people got sick from either lack of water or the dirty water. One day, a group of people came to drill a well in her village. Because of the well, Naya could go to school, and the village became closer. Salva was the leader of the group drilling wells.
Salva is a real person, and he's also a character in the book A Long Walk to Water by Linda Sue Park. Salva's village gets attacked when he's about our age, and he starts his journey to Ethiopia with his group. Salva travels to a lot of different refugee camps, and his persevering attitude gets him all the way to the USA, where he finds a new family. Salva now helps build wells in southern Sudan, and he did not give up, and now he's helping others.
If there's wells in Sudan, girls can go to school, and they don't have to walk eight hours for water every day. Less people will get sick and die from waterborne diseases, and the economy can grow. They can improve their hygiene, because most people there can't take showers or even wash their hands.
The character Salva made water for Sudan after being reunited with his father. Our fifth grade class is going to take on the Iron Giraffe Challenge, which is a fundraiser for Salva's organization. Last year, our school raised $2,300. Our goal is $2,500 for this year. It costs $15,000 to fill the well. Our fundraiser plan is to do the penny wars and to sell kindness hearts for the Bulletin Board in February. Salva taught us to take everything one step at a time. We are going to take this on projects one step at a time to reach our goal.
Thank you so much for sharing that with us. Could you guys come over here for a second?
Those are Eagle pens. I only have two, I think, so keep it in good place. It's hard to get those.
Guys, do great.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was a great report, and we would look forward to hearing the results of the fundraising when your fundraising efforts are over. Next up is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. I have a few things to report on. I wanted to provide everyone with a construction update. So our high school varsity baseball field, they were putting the sod in this week, a little later than expected, but still should be ready to use for the spring, so that's coming along. The high school's auditorium, if you've seen, the stage loft is almost enclosed, again, before the snow flies. The roof has been placed, and we're anticipating around May 8, the beginning of May, completion. We originally had planned for mid-April, but that's pushed back slightly. The high school LMC is being finished soon. The structures for the ribbons are installed. There were some structural items that delayed some of this work. We're anticipating that it'll be completed around mid-December, so the plan is to move everything back into the library over the winter break, so students will be able to use it when they return. And then D-122, which is the temporary library, is slated for renovation, so that will begin immediately after that. The high school kitchen is coming along as well. We're anticipating mid-November completion and beginning serving hot meals in December. And it does still require a health department inspection, so once it's completed, there's a little bit of a lag before everything will be usable. And then also, we're starting to look at what other items we can do during the year, so we're not trying to get everything in during the summer. So the plan, the next, some of the work that's being done coming up, all the high school bathrooms are being renovated, so there's a plan to renovate each of those in the next few months as well. So some will be closed down for certain periods of time. I also wanted to provide everyone with an update on our School Start Time Committee. We had a meeting last week, right? Last week? Monday?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. The school bus consultants were there for the meeting, and we discussed the options that they had proposed, and we are having them pursue, looking at moving the high school to potentially the 8:00 start time, which was what we had discussed last time. So the next phase of the work will be that the school bus consultants will be working with our Transportation Department to do routing and analysis to see if that's possible, and we'll reconvene. They expected that work will take a couple of months, so we'll probably reconvene with the committee maybe early February about what our next steps would be in continuing to look at this and look at the options. Also, we have a number of sports teams that are doing quite well. So last Saturday, our girls' soccer team won their sectional double-A title. It's the second year in a row. They defeated Niskiuna. They're playing this Saturday against Fayetteville Manlius at 2:00 in the Regional Champions, held at Mechanicville. It'll be held at Mechanicville High School again. Yesterday, two days ago, the cross-country sectionals, we had a freshman, Riley Davis, who earned an opportunity to go to the state championships that's being held in Plattsburgh. And two days ago, our boys' soccer team played in the sectional final champions and championship and lost unfortunately in overtime to Shenandoah. It was a great game, though, and they played well. Our boys' volleyball team defeated Gilderlin in the quarterfinals, finals, and they're facing Columbia tonight, so I'm not sure how they're doing. And the girls' swim and dive also had a great season. They were undefeated, and they start diving sectionals Thursday at Shen, and then swimming starts Friday again at Shen and Saturday. So congratulations to all of our fall teams, and good luck to those who are still competing. And finally, there's piles of books for all of you. So tonight, we'd like to recognize our school board members. For those of you who don't know, these are volunteer positions. I appreciate all the time that each of you donate to help support our students, staff, and our programs. I know it takes away you away from your families on many evenings, many, many evenings, a lot in the spring. It's important to let you know how much we appreciate all that you do. So in honor of School Board Recognition Week, each board member is donating books to our school libraries, and I'm sure each of you want to share the various books that you'll be donating, so thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you. I always love that we're giving these books to all the different libraries. And mine this year are going to Glenmont Elementary School, and it's the one that's right up on the top, but one of the books is The Truth is Told by Mason Buttle, which it's funny, I actually just had gotten this book out of the library for one of my own children to read, because I had heard that it was a really good choice. Jonathan, do you want to go next?
You want me to go next?
Sure. Just go down the row.
My books this year go to Elsmere Elementary School, and I have quite a number that are just wonderful. One is Dinosaurs by the Numbers, Who Doesn't Like Dinosaurs? The Ambrose Deception, which just by reading the cover, I would like to read, and it looks like a quick read, even though it's thick. Island Born, Titan and the Wild Boars, The True Cave Rescue of the Thai Soccer Team. And if you remember, this was on the news, and I flipped through it earlier, and it is a wonderful tale, well told. Secrets of Animal Camouflage, this is by Steve Jenkins and Robin Page. Steve Jenkins is known for nonfiction, and he has several other good books that if you're interested, you should take out of the library. And finally, one of my favorite, Samuel Morse, That's Who. It's a story of the telegraph and Morse code, and for anyone who's into coding now, this is a fascinating start as to how we got there.
So it's becoming the running joke, I think, on the school board where everyone forgets to remind Willow that this is the day we do this. So I didn't look at any of my books ahead of time. Mine this year are going to the high school, so I can't even look at them quickly and guess what they're about, because they're big high school books. But there's a lot of nonfiction, which look really interesting. We have Secret Soldiers, How the U.S. 23rd Special Troops Fooled the Nazis. Bucket List Adventures, Ten Incredible Journeys to Experience Before You Die, which has lots of incredible pictures of places that now I want to go to. Codename Lease, The True Story of a Woman Who Became World War II's Most Highly Decorated Spy, which I'm going to put on my list to go get myself. And Educated, a memoir. Another, I'm told, fascinating nonfiction.
It is a very good book.
But next year, I'm really going to remember to look ahead of time, I promise.
I remind you too. On the way as we walked in.
My books are going to Hammergrill this year. The first one is a Jigsaw Jones mystery, The Case of the Hat Burglar. This is by James Preller, who is a local author. We're very proud of him, and I believe his kids went to Hammergrill, so it's wonderful to support him and have his books in our local libraries. I also have Yasmin in Charge. It looks like an early chapter book with the character of Yasmin. She looks like a lot of fun. Front Desk, I know this is very popular. I think the, I know Elsmere has a book club where they read this book. It's a wonderful book. My children, one of my children has read it, about a girl named Mia, whose family are immigrants, and they run a motel, and some of her challenges. Beverly Right Here by Kate DiCamillo. I've never heard of this one, but she has so many wonderful books, so I'm sure this one is wonderful as well. She's just an amazing author. Needleheads, this is a new series for me. I've never looked at this one, but it looks like a lot of fun, graphic novel from the guy who does Fly Guy. I know that's a very popular series, so I'll have to take a look at that. True Truths and a Lie, Histories and Mysteries, a nonfiction book about some interesting facts about history. Rolling Thunder by Kate Masner. This looks really interesting. I was just looking through it. It's about a child's trip to see the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington, D.C. It's got some beautiful pictures and looks like a really moving story, and a good way to talk to children about the Vietnam Memorial. And finally, Moon, the Earth's Best Friend, which looks like a really fun book that teaches children about the moon. So I'm looking forward to seeing these all at Hammergrill.
So my books are going to be donated to Slingerland, and this year, there's a diverse group of books. Cat vs. Dog, for animal lovers. It's a hilarious story about cats and dogs and their rivalry, so I think there's a lot of kids who'll like that kind of story. This one looks very interesting, too. It's Clayton Bird Goes Underground, and it's about loss. Like, he's very close with his grandfather, and he plays music with him, and his mother disapproves of the music that he's playing. So after his grandfather dies, it's about them building their bond together. So it's a little bit about love and loss and grief. Another Yasmin book, and it's about a Pakistani, mine's about a Pakistani girl who doesn't like her parents' spicy food, and so therefore, she's going to teach them different recipes, so that would be kind of fun. Supergrows, self-explanatory. The Bad Moods and the Stick. Aiden, wherever you are, I see you. This book could be for you. And then Bloom Boom, it's a photography book about just flowers and pictures and art, so it's nice.
I was given a little bit of a heads-up that this would happen tonight, and it's my first time, you know, for such a thing to have happened. But I didn't know what the titles were until I just sat down and looked at them. Unfortunately, these are going to Eagle, right here, and Mo Williams, if anybody knows, is one of the best contemporary writers for young people and children that you can possibly have. So The Pigeon Has to Go to School is going to be a big hit in this library, I'm sure. And then the other one that caught my eye right off the top is Pax, and it's a story of a fox who has to be returned to the wild because his boy's father has to go off and serve in a war. So it just looks very touching. There's a couple of fun ones about magic, A Tale of Magic, and the book Wanderers, kind of, you know, a little bit fantastical. So those are very popular subjects for young people these days. My specialty is high school English, so, I mean, I kind of almost wish I had, you know, the high school books, but, you know, because I did teach that for many years. But anyway, these look like a really great little collection of things for the library here at Eagle.
Sure. I want to congratulate whoever picked out my books. They must have been my brain, because, first of all, I've read a couple of these, and they're all right up my alley, so it's perfect. First of all, How High the Moon by Karen Parsons, about life in the segregationist South. Next one, Willow, Dissenter on the Bench. It's about Ruth Bader Ginsburg, who, she is one of the liberal judges on the Supreme Court. But for anyone in any part of the political spectrum, just to hear her story and how she rose up to become a member of the Supreme Court is just, it's incredible to how she did it. And to be 85 now and still kicking butt like she is, it's just a wonderful story. Next one, this book's been around for a long time. Lies My Teacher Told Me, Everything Your American History Textbook Got Wrong. I don't know if it's a subtle shot at me, because I'm a social studies teacher. No, no, just kidding. It's a book that I, I've read this, and I love this book. It really talks about how America, some of the things that we kind of glossed over for a really long time, you know? Europeans showed up, and everything was great. There was nobody here before. Everything's better now. So it just really talks about a lot of the things that didn't get mentioned. The last two, Every Man a Hero and Everything We Have, are about D-Day. And you gave me a microphone, so I'm going to use it for a minute. You know, for my grandparents, D-Day was current events, you know? And then for my parents and myself, it was, you know, it was something we heard about and learned about, you know, because my grandparents were there, but it's becoming ancient history. You know, it really is. It's becoming the fact of the people that risked their lives and, you know, shaped the world it is today are 95 years old, and they're dying off, you know, every day. And so books like this are so important, because, you know, we live in a world today that we're shaped by these people that, you know, got off a boat on a beach in machine gun fire and risked everything, so, you know, we can sit here and have this meeting in a democratic style. So these are two books that I would highly, highly recommend, just because there's so much in here that previous generations took for granted, but just because, you know, time is passing, it's something that we're forgetting and really need to remember.
That's everything. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm going to be annoying, I saw the microphone, I apologize. Can I ask two questions for Jody about the report, real quick? About your superintendent's report?
Yes, absolutely.
First, the start time, the start school later, 8:00 would be the high school, so we would potentially switch the, is it looking at switching the?
No, so there would be no impact at this point to other levels. So the options that were presented around the 8:00 time seem the most doable, least impactful, so the committee decided that that's the one we wanted school bus consultants to pursue. Now, once they get into their analysis, there may be things that change, but based on the data they initially looked at in their analysis of all the potential options, that's where the committee landed at this point. It's still early, so we'll see what they come back with, but that would be right now where the committee is in the process.
Okay. And the other one was about the cafeteria. I know there were concerns at the end of the year about the loss of revenue, because the cafeteria wasn't going to be able to function at full capacity, and I was wondering how we were doing so far on that.
Do you have that info, Jody?
Yeah. I just met with Alyssa Isar, the Food Service Director, this week to look at her projections through the month of October. We were planning on a loss. Right now, it's around $30,000, but if you recall, we had built up some surpluses in their fund balance to cover that. So the fund will be in the black as of the end of the year, even though we will have a loss for this year.
I just wanted to thank all of, or congratulate all of our musicians for their concert series that occurred. I wasn't here last meeting, so I just wanted to bring it up and say how much I enjoyed it. It was nice at the middle school. The acoustics were really good upstairs. I don't know if you noticed a difference.
Yeah, I was actually, I was sitting pretty close to the front, so I heard.
It's nice.
So I did enjoy the fall concerts. I also was at the middle school for the music faculty recital, which was, I think, a week ago Monday, and that was also tremendous. So I congratulate all of our music faculty that participated, and if they do it again next year, I highly recommend going and attending, because it's pretty amazing what our music faculty can do. As long as we're on the topic of music, I also attended the cabaret at the high school this past Friday, and want to congratulate all of these student performers. I think there were almost 50 acts performing in the cabaret. They were all terrific, and I would commend Mr. Dashu for organizing the event for the school. It was very, very well attended. There were a lot of people there this year. Last, is it last week or the week before now? I attended the NISBA convention with Meredith and with Willow, and a couple of things that stood out to me. One of the presentations that I attended was the communications workshop the day before the convention, which had a focus on emotional intelligence. And there really was an emphasis on how important it is, not just for the students, but for the teachers and for the administrators, to have that training and self-awareness so that they can combat stress and burnout. And I just want to make sure that, as a board, if there's anything that we can do to support initiatives along those lines, that we hear about them. And similarly, one of the issues that came up was about, and I know we've talked about this before, but the importance of making sure that every student in every building has a positive connection with an adult in the building. And in the workshop, we talked about some of the research that really shows how important that is for students attending school. And so again, if there are other initiatives to encourage that, I would hope that we would hear about them so that we could support them. And I know Meredith and Willow also wanted to comment on the convention.
It was very interesting, very educational. I went to several days, I went to the pre-conference law seminar to learn about all the recent legal developments, which was very educational. I also went to several sessions on social-emotional learning, mental health task force. One of the most interesting sessions I went to was regarding, it was called A New Look at Homework, and it was put on by the North Rockland School District, and it was regarding, they spent three years studying their homework policy and creating a new policy for homework K through 12. And they presented a lot of interesting research, that I have links on if anyone would like to read it, about what type of homework is useful and what type of homework can actually be harmful in terms of adding stress and time to children when not actually providing any benefit. So their policy really focused on the type of homework that was assigned, the quality of the assignment, the different types of assignment. They were really going, trying to move away from rote, rote learning unless there was a specific reason for it, such as learning math facts, looking at the workload, looking at immediate feedback, so children know what they've done wrong and don't have to wait a month to get a lab back. And I thought it was really interesting, and I really appreciate the fact that it was policy-based. They were not trying to just give every teacher, tell every teacher what to do, that everyone, they had three years of study with a lot of stakeholders, a lot of committees came together to finally create this policy. So. So I thought it was something perhaps we should take a look at. Like I said, it was the North Rockland School District, and they have their policy on their website, if anyone would like to discuss that at some point.
Well, Dave, I know this has been a topic, it's been a topic in the district for years, at least three or four years, where we were going to look at it.
Four years ago now, we developed elementary homework standards for the K-5 level, and we're currently working on, as part of a larger discussion around grading at the sixth through eight, through twelve level. But we, yeah, we, we had a committee, it was about four years ago now, that worked on this. We did a parent survey, and I can share the document, but we have a four-page document that teachers use as guidelines, and it speaks to all of the points that you just raised, for sure.
And then one of our, if you recall, one of our action plan items this year was for six-twelve, to begin looking at grading and homework practices. So we've already had two sessions. Tom Guskay came in, and there was about forty teachers or so, and we're planning to do follow-up with more, the rest of the faculty at Superintendent's Conference Day in March.
Great. Wonderful. I think this would be a great topic to bring up at a meeting, just about maybe what you did at the elementary level. I know four years ago, when Mike Klugman was talking at, I don't know if it was a board meeting or what, what we were at, I think it was a board meeting, he talked about, at the middle school level, they were looking at it, and that was several years ago. And I know, I'm sure a lot of these high schoolers can probably talk about it, but there's a lot of stress at the high school level, especially when you're taking multiple AP classes and playing sports, and, you know, I think the sooner we look at it or, you know, have ideas about it, it would alleviate a lot of stress and issues that we have at that level. Because they get to college and some of them think it's easier, so if it's not adding any, any benefit to what they're learning at this level, we should look at it. So that was, I think that was great. Thanks for bringing it up again.
Yeah, so yeah, I do think it would be wonderful to have that as actual, as subject for an upcoming meeting. And the one other thing I wanted to bring up is, at this convention, there were a lot of vendors. One of the vendors that was there was a bus company, and they brought literature on electric buses. I know that we had discussed that, and I just wanted to make sure that it was something that our bus consultants were going to bring us information on.
It's going to be part of their analysis.
Great.
Thank you.
So I was at the convention as well. I really enjoyed this year, I think even more than last year. You know, NISBA has really made a call this year to school boards to focus on creating inclusivity and kindness in educational settings, and so I found that most of the convention was really focused on sort of that social-emotional learning, which is a lot more my jam than going to classes about how to read audit reports, no offense, which is what we did last year, so. You know, you talked about the importance of having one, at least one adult to connect with a student, and I think the workshop that stayed with me the most was one about LGBTQ youth, for whom that concept is even more important. And there were some really alarming statistics about rates of depression and suicide for that population. And, I mean, it was standing room only in this room, everybody left sobbing. It was, it was a really powerful workshop. But the one I wanted to mention focused on leadership in elementary school, which I think is something we actually do really well in the district, but the presentation was sort of the importance of creating leadership opportunities for elementary school students, because it helps them to learn and to grow in ways that you don't notice, sort of teaches them focus and time management and teamwork. And the school district that presented had, this must be all they do all day, but they have lunchroom leaders within their elementary schools, so the older elementary school students help the younger ones open their lunchboxes and their straws and find their seats. They have badges, and they switch off every few weeks. Attendance leaders who gather the attendance records and all meet in the hallway and walk up to the principal's office to deliver them, you know, sort of learn why it's important and when, when on the clock is the time for us to go do that. Fire drill leaders who run out and prop the doors open. I mean, the concept was anything an adult does that a student could do, find ways to empower them to do it, so they sort of learn to be part of the team, and, you know, that everyone is, is an important part of that. So I thought there was a lot of really good ideas there. And then to come back and go to the community day at the high school, sponsored by No Place for Hate, was just like the perfect way to wrap up sort of the whole weekend of the inclusivity theme. It was a really, I thought for the first time it was done, it was really well attended, it was really nice of them.
Sure. A few things. One, I also went to the No Place for Hate March last, was it last Tuesday? Is that what it was? Yes. Took my, my, my wife went and my two kids came, and it really was a wonderful event. It was nice that it was at the track, so my two boys could run around and have fun, and, but just the turnout was, was wonderful. Just kind of an interesting side note, so I wore my jacket that night and put my No Place for Hate button on, and I didn't even think about it, and so the next day, I put my jacket back on, and at six forty-five in the morning, I'm at Stewart's, and someone, the lady's like, "That's a really nice pin." And, oh, that was, you know, that's, it happened once, whatever, but it kept happening, like, all, like, day long. People keep coming up to me and talking about it, and it, it's just, it's, it's a, it's a button. It's just a button, but like, it's crazy what just a button can do. I mean, people were really affected by the fact that I wore a button that said No Place for Hate. I didn't even need to say anything, but it just started a conversation, and that was, you know, really powerful. So started wearing it a lot more, you know, and the conversations have continued. So it's just, it's just neat, how something very small like that, that wasn't even, you know, I didn't even realize it at first, but really made a difference. Couple other things, I want to thank the PTA and all the parents that are running the greatest event in the world to my two children. It's called the Book Fair. I've heard about the Book Fair for about three weeks now, and it's going out at Hamburgel, and it's all my kids talk about, and I know how many hours the parents have put into that, and I just want to thank everybody who volunteers at that and puts up with excited children running around, trying to purchase things, and bringing bags of coins to do pay with them. So thank you to everyone who, who made that possible. And then finally, you know, at Hamburgel, we're really excited, because one of our event is Capers tomorrow night, so we're going to be reading books tomorrow night at Hamburgel, and that's been on the calendar for three weeks, and another great event that our district puts on.
Wendy, Kristen, do you guys have anything else to say?
No, I'm not saying.
I, I just, I went to the concert for the high school, the band concert, Band and Symphony Orchestra, and it was, it was really, really good. Even if it was at the middle school, it was really good.
I liked it better. I liked it better. I thought the sound was so good. It's probably perfect size.
It was. It was a good size.
Perfect.
It was perfect. I mean, that's, I mean, I love the middle school too, don't get me wrong, but it was, it was definitely strange, attending a high school event at the middle school, but.
Seats were uncomfortable, but.
But just reminded me how much we are looking forward for the auditorium to be finished.
We have to wait.
I know our, our next policy committee meeting is coming up next week, on Wednesday, Wednesday, and I think there was a facilities committee meeting just before our meeting tonight. Jonathan, did you want to just report back on that?
Basically, we're, what did you say the word for? On time and on, and under budget. But we are still finding places where we do have to make some changes. One was the, one of the, was it the softball field or the?
Baseball.
Baseball. The baseball field, the infield was flooding, so we've added a drain. And there were some other places, Ray ended up looking at the help desk and realized he needed some more data ports, so those have been put in. And where we, where we find places that need touch-ups or finishes or fixes, we try to get them in, and we're staying under budget and on time, so that's a good thing.
Yes. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is our presentation for this evening, from Eagle Elementary, about our targeted reading instruction for K to five.
Okay, thank you very much. Great segue, talking about reading so much, so this is perfect. And so, first of all, I'll just introduce myself. I'm Andy Baker, I'm the K-12 ELA supervisor. Of course, Diana.
I'm Diane Reagan, Eagle principal.
So, thank you so much. This should only be about an hour and a half. You guys okay with that? Kidding, kidding. So we wanted to, you know, we've presented in the past on our program, I believe it was last year, maybe, or two years ago, I lose track of time, with our writing program, K-5. So the time seemed appropriate to, to talk about our reading program, and of course, it's, it's vast. We could, we could literally spend more than an hour and a half. We won't, don't worry. So we sort of decided to focus in on the theme for the presentation being targeted reading instruction. So to kind of, you know, we're going to talk about other aspects, but to just sort of funnel it through that lens of how, how we present reading instruction to students, and then how teachers monitor students' reading progress and provide appropriate instruction and interventions to support students as they develop their reading skills through the K-5 years. So I'll just talk briefly about the, the next generation learning standards and our BC curriculum. In terms of the standards, the next generation standards are in process of being kind of fully implemented. It's the, sort of the next iteration of Common Core learning standards. They're generally the same, but with some key differences. And some of those differences you might not notice upon first glance, but just to kind of highlight some things, they have a section on lifelong reader, practices of lifelong readers and writers. They merge the information and narrative reading standards together, literature, sorry, let's call it. The creation of the Early Learning Task Force, a lot of emphasis on early learning, emphasis on the importance of interactive play, purposeful play at the primary levels. And also, they kind of pulled the text complexity standard out into its own strand, so that you could focus in on some things that really are more developmentally appropriate than I think the prior standards were. In terms of our curriculum for the, for our reading curriculum, of course, our literacy program is a balanced literacy program, where that encompasses multiple facets of literacy, from, you know, all of the things that teachers are doing in the classroom, guided reading groups, word work, phonics, and all of that kind of gets pulled together, and I think Diana's going to speak a little more to that later. So that's the slide that I was supposed to have up when I was talking about the next generation, so, there it is. Peruse it quickly, perhaps? You guys have this anyway, right? So the BC site for, and for classroom reading instruction, a couple of years ago, we had a program review, and in concert with other, you know, teachers and educators at the time in the district, we're talking about how we kind of, where we store resources and information about our curriculum. So we moved from a Wiki that we were maintaining, that kind of had everything very spread out, to a site that's organized around grade levels, so that each grade level can go in and look at the resources and information for their grade level. It's much more streamlined, it's much easier, and much more appropriate in terms of how we store the information in there. So there's lots of, lots of resources, there's lots of information about the curriculum. You can go in there and you can look at, basically, you can see in the reading page, it breaks down expectations for reading, both from an assessment standpoint, instruction, how much time should be spent each day. Of course, we also have the Teachers College Units of Study and Reading, which is our kind of direct instruction of reading skills, as another component of, like I said before, that balanced literacy approach. So all of that information is stored on that Google site. When we talk about K-5 reading and the acquisition of reading skills for students, this slide really gives a great overview of how the acquisition of students reading, and their being able to read, what we, what we call in education, you know, cracking the code of understanding that sounds at the earliest level, at the, at the first level with print concepts, just understanding basic organizational concepts around books. You know, we read from left to right, how books are oriented, that kind of thing. Moving up, you know, you get into the foundational skills of reading. The concept that, that, first of all, that all, the idea that there's a sound system to our language, and that sounds represent, or there are letters that represent sounds, which is really phonemic awareness, the idea that the sounds are the smallest unit of words, it's called a phoneme, and so the, the construction of words becomes phonics. So students are developing along this progression in a way where teachers can monitor their progress, and this slide really gives a great overview of how you move up in those areas of, of reading. Of course, to vocabulary, to comprehension, and what we're, what we're learning too, we see as students are, of, in every grade level, can be really anywhere along that continuum, but our goal is that we're moving them along as we move from primary to intermediate, that they're gaining skills to be able to move to the next level in that progression. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Reagan, she can talk a little more about using data to drive instruction.
So obviously, in any class, we have a range of readers from below grade level to above grade level, and we wanted to focus on our targeted reading instruction, so you, you could see the data that we look at in order to figure out the best way to meet each learner's needs, whether they are struggling in phonemic awareness, or they may be struggling on vocabulary or comprehension. So in kindergarten, we have something called the ELP, which is the Early Learning Profile, and this is basically, do you know your letters? Can you recognize your letters? And do you know what those, the names of they are, of them are? Can, you know the sounds that your letters make, writing is in there, and basic spelling. And this is a one-on-one assessment that kindergarten teachers do, as soon as they can, when the children walk in the door, and that gives them a lot of knowledge about where to start and where to group their kiddos. We also have something called Fanta's and Penel, which is a one-on-one inventory, reading inventory, that the teacher sits down with the child, much more in-depth than the ELP. A child reads a book at a certain level, and you can, it can either be fiction or nonfiction, because your reading level, especially as a growing reader, can be different at a nonfiction level than it can be at a fiction level. And so you sit down, the child reads the book to you, you do what we call a miscue analysis, which is simply decoding, so if, if they didn't pronounce a word correctly or if they skipped a word, you mark all that, and you grade that, and then at the end, the kit comes with comprehension questions, and you grade those on a rubric as well. And when you have the, the percentage of the decoding and the percentage of the comprehension, you put those two things together, and you get a reading level for a student, which could be A, which is really preschool, all the way up to Z, which is high school, you know, the end of high school. And we do these in the fall, middle of the year for most kids, but definitely our struggling readers, and at the end of the year as well. And then we also have iReady. And iReady is in our, our third year, third year that we're using iReady, and we're finding that it has a lot of data that we can quickly look at. And this is when the students sit down and the computer, it's all computer-based, and they answer questions, and the computer figures out which they got wrong and which they got correct, and then moves them in a track that is independent, or individualized, I should say. So if they get it right, they go forward, if they get it wrong, they might go backwards, and then the data that we get from the end result is where, how we can group our kids. So this is just an example of a student that, one printout that you can get from a child, and the, the child is the blue bar. The green is the grade level range that we're hoping the child will get to. The green, the bright green line is a target, that's where we really want the child to get to. And there's also, we, I will show you another slide, but there's also how much we can hopefully, if the child grows a hundred percent that year, so able, if a child actually grows one year's growth, can we get them into that green zone? And you can see from, on the right-hand side, it will tell you how the child did. So this child tested out of phonological awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, but in vocabulary, that's something that they did not do too well on, and that's something the teacher should target. And then comprehension literature, you can see is, this person struggles more than the comprehension informational, so you would want to work more on the fictional books with this child. This is an example of a class report that a teacher can run. In this one, each, I blocked out the student's name, but each line would be a student, and the growth, the, the blue bars is how much that student grew from, through the year. So you want the blue bar on the So, you want the blue bar on the left, you're hoping for 100%, because that's a full year's growth. And the blue bar on the right is something they call stretch growth, which basically means if the child is below where they need to be, and they need to get to grade level, we want them to grow even more than a year, to get to where they need to go. And again, you can, you can see a lot of data from this, and you can start grouping your children according to this, when you, especially when you get here. So, you can run another report, and you can see, I blocked out the children's names, but this teacher can easily see, okay, in group one, which would be your lowest group, and group five would be your highest group, you can see immediately who falls in that group. And then, if you click on one of these groups, you actually will get what you should be working on as a teacher. So, I clicked on one of those groups, and there's two children in that group, and you can kind of see if it's phonemic awareness, or vocabulary, or what it is. And then, actually, you can even, if you were able to scroll down here, you would be able to see examples of what you should actually teach, and there are some lessons. I would say most teachers will peruse the lessons quickly, and then kind of make up their own lessons to supplement, but at least it targets the skills that that child is missing. So, you can do that in small group work. That's you.
Okay. Yes. So, you know, we've said a lot, and, and in kind of moving forward, it, again, remembering that our lens is really how teachers, you know, recognize the level where students are with regard to their reading, acquisition of their reading skills, and what interventions, and how they can target instruction to facilitate student growth. So, in our Teachers College Units of Study, which we use for K5 and reading, to do direct reading instruction and teaching students how to read through the Teachers College Reading Workshop Model, which is where there's, there are mini lessons that are taught each day, and those mini lessons teach a reading skill or strategy, which is then practiced, you know, independently by students. And teachers are consistently and continually evaluating that, where their students are, that their students are reaching certain benchmarks, certain milestones. At the K2 level, there are no formal assessments, per se, built into the units. The assessment, if you will, is really the teacher using the tools that they have at their disposal, all of the, and their own observations, and their own recording of where students are, to ensure that, that students are making growth with regard to their development of their phonemic, phonological awareness, and moving them towards, you know, reading, ultimately, being able to read, and being able to read fluently, and read for information and understanding. So, with regard to what that looks like in terms of this slide, is you're seeing, you know, kind of a whole host of things that teachers can do that are assessments, such as, you know, identifying, first of all, letter sound identification, you know, we, kindergarten teachers will, I remember sitting in meetings at Elsmere, where, you know, you would talk about how many letters kids have, how many letters do they know that the letter makes a certain sound? And that's the first building block of, of later reading development. And it's really fascinating, because, you know, as a, as a middle school teacher, you know, they just came to me and they knew how to read, although, looking back, many of them maybe didn't. But I was just too, too young to really realize. But seeing how kids learn to read is incredible, really, to me. So, also, one of the things that's up there that I wanted to highlight, I think it's the next slide to talk about, yeah. You'll see this thing called a running record. A running record is, in the reading program of Fountas and Pennell, this is, you talked about the letters before, and doing the, assigning students letters on the, on that continuum. Basically, a teacher will have a student read text, and if they're reading text, they're going to be right, right in front of them, the teacher's, and typically, what will happen is the student is reading a little book. They're not reading off a piece of paper. But the teacher has a piece of paper with the same text printed on it, and they're going to do what's called, excuse me, what's called a miscue analysis. So, they're going to be hearing, this, this gets to what's called decoding, which is literally sounding out, you know, the sounds of, that words make, that letters make in form words. And they're going to determine after that assessment, where that student is, based on not only the miscue analysis, which records the errors students make in their reading, but also, at the end, asking the students to, to tell them, to retell what the story was about. And that information, that decoding with the comprehension, the teacher then makes an informed decision as to what level the student is at. And then, they can use that level to form guided reading groups, which then target instruction for students in, at their level. You know, guided reading groups and read alouds are probably the most important components, because that small group instruction, that individualized instruction is what's going to have, is going to be most impactful in moving students along in their reading progression. All right, and with that, Mrs. Reagan?
So, in K2, in our kits, the assessments are less formal, like Andy was just saying. The Fountas and Pennell running records are very formal, but then the teachers can do a running record, informal one, on any book the child reads. And then, as we get into 3-5, it's much more formal. And actually, there is a pre-test before you teach the unit, and it's usually a writing prompt to, after reading, you need to write, write your answer to the questions, and then the unit is taught, and then at the end, there is a post-assessment. And in this example, it, they're going to read stories about cars, I believe, and then the students have to answer each one of these four questions. So, it's pretty lengthy. It's not like your typical reading test, where you would have multiple-choice questions, and it really is reading and responding to the reading. The children have a student rubric where they can self-assess. Self-assessment is very important in student learning, so you, the kit comes with a lot of different assessment tools, one of them being this rubric that the children can look at and say, well, did I do this, and did I not do that? And they can self-assess. And then, when the, when the teachers actually sit down to grade the writing, which is rather tough, because the kids are writing in paragraphs, basically, the kit gives you sample answers for, if you're, for the grading of the rubric. So, if it's a Level 1, the answer will look like so, and it will include such and such all the way up to a Level 4. So, there's a lot of tools in the kit for the teachers to use to help them assess. And then, our last slide tonight is what's on the horizon. One of the things we did notice, and it was through our iReady test, our results as well, is that our phonics in our lower grades, our scores weren't great. And I remember the, with the man from iReady, when he first came here, said it was like a district-wide, we were low in phonics, and he said, if it's a district-wide thing, it's most likely a curriculum issue. So, we did look a little bit more closely at our kits, and when you look at our kits, the phonics is embedded in each one of the units, but it's very informal. It might say, you know, today, try and talk about rhyming words during your mini lesson, or bring this in. But there's not a formal scope and sequence of, of when to teach phonics, and who's responsible for teaching what. So, Lucy Cawkins from Columbia, who wrote the kits, got very smart, and said, I can just make a phonics kit. And that's what we are piloting right now. And I think almost everybody in the district now is piloting, right? So, we had some teachers pilot last year, and now, basically, everybody's piloting. And we, they are loving it. We, I had a great little video for you today of Amy Bogus teaching it, and of course, I could not embed it in this, I had trouble. But basically, it was very interesting, I went in there to look at her, to watch the phonics kit in action, because I've only seen pieces of it, and she was putting up the word "look" up on the, underneath the document camera, and they went through, and they spelled "look," and then she put "look" up again, but in a different font. So, it looked very different. And then, she put "look" up, the word "look" up again, but again, in a different font. And so, her, the whole lesson was based on how to read words when they're in different fonts, because remember, our A for most of our books is not the A that we teach kiddos to write. So, this was part of her lesson, after she introduced it. You can see they had to sort, and there are lots of different fonts, fonts with little dots on the end. And it was a little bit harder than I thought it would be for them. So, that was something we had never looked at before, that the font that is chosen in the book may or may not be helping the child read. So, we are really loving these kits, we are in the pilot phase, and hopefully, we will formally adopt them in the ELA cabinet next year, after we assess the whole pilot.
And we'll meet this very discuss whether they're about to adopt for implementation next year.
So, Andy and I run the K5 ELA cabinet together, and we like to, we'll, all curriculum runs through the cabinet, which has representatives from, from each school, and from every grade level. So, whenever we do something, we pilot it, and then we figure it out as a committee if we want to adopt it. And that takes us to our last slide, which is questions.
So, with the iReady, is it, there's the, sort of, the graph of where you're hoping that the student will improve? With the Fountas and Pennell, is there, are you also trying to get from like one letter to another letter by the end of the year?
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
There is a chart, yep, I'm going to go through it.
I mean, they, they do want students to move through the levels and be able to achieve, you know, a benchmark, gold letter by the end of that year. And of course, the letter, you know, arbitrary represents, obviously, not arbitrary, but it, it represents, by itself, it doesn't mean anything, but it is associated with how they leveled students' reading ability.
Okay. And that's the chart.
There you go. So, you can see by the end of kindergarten, I think actually, we, we realized.
We, we want them to be at D by the end of kindergarten.
We're calling the independent level, where they're reading on more of their own.
Okay.
Or it's an instructional level.
And you can kind of see, and this is, as the year progresses, so if you're in second grade, and you're towards, you know, three-quarters of the way through the year, you want them to be at these levels, and you don't want them to be below K. So, every teacher has this chart, and we, we try to get every child to D by the end of kindergarten. We, we still have kiddos that struggle, but we do know that early intervention is very powerful, and that's why all of the resources and support that you have put into RTI over the last couple, well, few years, has been phenomenal, because they can support those kids that are where we want them to be.
Okay.
Do you track how often a teacher uses the kits, and is there any correlation if they're in there utilizing the tools that are provided more frequently, that you can see more success with reading in the classroom? You might not be at that level yet, but I just thought I'd ask, because it sounds like there's a lot of autonomy in whether or not a teacher can use the tools within the kit. I mean, you do use some of the evaluation tools with it, but it sounds like some teachers could possibly use it more or less, and do you gauge that in any way?
That's a very good question. It is our curriculum, or the kits, so it is expected that every teacher teach the kits. And you, but however, the first time you teach any curriculum that is made for you, you sort of definitely follow it, the very first time, and the second time, you figure out, well, this is, was a great lesson, this one I didn't like so much, I'm going to switch these around. So, we're on year, I don't know, five, maybe?
Five.
Five, probably, and so, there is more autonomy now, now that they know the kits very well. We've never done anything to see if anybody's results are better.
Right, if you utilize it a certain way, or talk about what works, what doesn't work within the kits, and if the teachers get together and they collaborate on this, what, this is what really works in my classroom, and I've seen really great improvement, at least, hopefully, there's some opportunity for everybody to share what they're learning, because they might utilize it differently.
Yeah, I do think they do that in their teams at their schools. We tend, we have, we don't do grade-level meetings like we used to, it's something that does come up a lot, but there's so much going on. There's new science kits this year, so a lot of them are choosing to, to focus on that, now that these are a little bit older, and a little bit more familiar to them.
But it'd be interesting to see. Would it be interesting to see if there's any correlation?
Yeah, and I will say, from the kits is definitely, we, we realized that the phonics were low, and the teachers knew that, too. We didn't really need iReady to figure that out. So, that is a, that was a positive result from everyone doing the kits and kind of figuring out what our needs were.
Well, that's how we all grew up on phonics, so.
Right.
We're just kind of doing the full circle.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's supposed to be balanced literacy, you know, and that's been that way for 30 years. It should not be phonics, and it shouldn't be whole literature, whole language, it should be a combination, a hybrid of both, yep.
Anything else?
You showed us the iReady analysis, and it seems like you can do a lot of different analysis with that. My question, though, is, have you, what do you think of the quality of the assessment of iReady? Like, when you see a certain child's results, do you think that that's accurate, or are we still questioning that?
So, one, now that we have two years, now that we have two years' worth of data, we've actually been able to run a correlation between the iReady results and the state testing results, and they're very highly correlated.
Okay.
So, normally, in statistics, when you have a correlation value of at least .7, it's considered, you know, highly correlated. Our math results are actually, all of them were .85 or better, and our ELA results were all in the .7 to .8 range.
Okay.
So, we are finding a high correlation between the two, and that's also knowing that the state assessments test both reading and writing, whereas iReady only assesses reading. So, to have them that highly correlated is even all that much more impressive.
Thank you.
Correlated by student, though?
By student.
By student, okay.
The nice thing with iReady, too, and I, we see this a lot at the Bell School, I'm sure you see more data, is the idea that, you know, it's filling in gaps. It's basically allowing, you know, in a, in a way, it's a more systematic way for students to be able to be, you know, for the system to identify where students are, especially at the lower levels, in terms of phonics. So, it's phonics, it's like PVC, they said phonics, and within phonics, phonological awareness, vocabulary, and then comprehension. So, as it moves up students up the chain of their skills, it's filling in gaps, and it's filling in some of those pieces that they may be missing to, in order to build those later skills.
And one of the things, I was talking to a middle school teacher today, and she said, for the first time, she was putting groups together, and she used the recommended groups that iReady puts together, and she had not done that before, and she said that the groups worked better than any group she had ever put together. So, she felt that they were really accurate, and, so, and the middle school kids are the ones who complain the most about iReady, right? So, I thought that was interesting. And there's two parts of it, there's the assessment part, and then there's the lesson part. So, there are two different parts to it, yeah.
Thank you.
I guess I covered some, sorry. So, first, I think you kindly answered, but I just want to make sure, when you talk about, you see students that are struggling at the early level in the RTI, do you feel that you right now have the resources to meet the needs of the kids that are struggling at that K2 level?
Is that a loaded question?
No, it's a, it's a, I'll tell you why, I'll tell you why I'm asking, I'm asking it just because, like, if we don't get kids on track by the end of second grade.
Correct.
It's a, the uphill battle is insane, you're not going to suddenly have someone catch up in sixth grade, it's not going to happen.
Correct.
So, we need to grab.
Even in third and fourth, it's all right.
We need to grab them at the K1-2 level, and so, my question is, like, do you feel that you have the adequate resources right now to, to do that?
Yeah. I would say that our RTI teacher schedules are chock full, so we could always use more, obviously. Our goal is to have less students in the 3-4-5 level that need that RTI support, so we're hoping that over the next couple of years, as we give more, we have the, more staff now, to look at our younger kids, K1 and 2, that our 3-4-5 numbers will decline a little bit, and they have a little bit, correct?
And they'll increase summer Alf.
Yep, and we increase summer Alf as well, that's true. And actually, Laurel Jones ran numbers on summer Alf, and it definitely helped with the summer regression, because we do see that, that group of kids often regresses significantly in the summer.
Okay.
And that stopped that.
Yeah, just keep us in the loop, because it's just, it's so, no, I mean, I mean, how do you teach, but how do you teach science and social studies and other things if kids can't read, you know, so, I mean, this is.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
This is, this is kind of a basic building block.
Well, and I get, I, I am frustrated sometimes when I see a fourth or fifth grade that has come through Eagle since kindergarten and is struggling with reading, like, I reflect to myself, what are we doing or not doing that we didn't catch that kiddo earlier? So, it's a good question.
The other question I had was, when, sometimes, when we do these very structured programs, we lose, I'm not sure what the word is, but like, free reading, or reading of choice. How do you incorporate reading of choice into a very structured program?
That is probably the basis of Columbia, is that you do the mini lesson, the mini lesson might be on development of characters, or character traits, let's say, but everybody is going back to their own book, and looking at their own characters, and the teacher does a lot of conferencing with them, one-on-one conferencing, small groups, guided reading, so they have choice all the time in this. Our upper grades every so often do a whole-class book, like the students presented today, A Long Walk to Water, which is more, it, it supports their social studies or science curriculum. That is very few and far between, but maybe one a year, if not, maybe two. But that's the whole structure of the unit, so I think we're good on that one.
Well, thanks for asking that, because that didn't come out through the presentation.
Yeah, it didn't.
It's a huge, huge proponent of the program, and philosophical undermining of that idea that students are reading their own self-selected texts, and that's how they're going to grow, the research shows, they're going to grow more when they're reading text that's challenging, but at their level.
And they like.
And they like. They like.
Their interest, high interest, yep.
Yeah, exactly, sure.
Questions? I just had one brief question. How, how do you guys teach writing along with all of this reading? Is it, are you using the Teachers College program?
Yep, we have our writing kits as well.
Right.
Yep, and we did a presentation maybe last year on that or the year before, I can't remember. It's very similar to their reading program, it's a mini lesson, kids write, they practice that mini lesson in their writing.
Writing workshop.
Writing workshop, yeah.
Still writing workshop.
Yeah, and actually, I think that had the biggest impact to us as a curriculum, because I think our writing curriculum prior to that was a little bit all over the place, because we just didn't really have it. Reading was more similar across the board, but writing was definitely all over.
For sure, I think before the kits, there was more variation.
Yes.
Maybe less consistency, I mean, you know, you still.
You still have the standards.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so that actually helped us a lot.
Yeah.
And we have seen our students' ability to write and stamina increase greatly with the kits. That was one thing we noticed right away.
True.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our recognition of visitors on an agenda item. If we have any visitors who would like to speak on an agenda item, now would be the time to come to the microphone. Yes, yeah. And if you could just state your name for us, that would be great.
Sure, I'm Margaret Mauer. I'd like to thank the Board and District for prioritizing targeted reading instruction in our schools. I know many dedicated teachers and administrators have been working hard to develop this new pilot program. The proposed literacy programs mentioned in tonight's presentation are the Teachers College Lucy Calkins and Words Their Way. These programs will, will work for many of our students, but let's, let's take this opportunity to introduce a literacy program that will work for all our young readers. It's a step in the right direction, but is it far enough? Both Teachers College Lucy Calkins and Words for Life are only research-based. Research-based means that parts or components of the program or method are based on practices demonstrated effective through research. Our students need a program that is evidence-based, meaning the entire program or method has been demonstrated by independent research to be effective. You can learn more about that on the ESSA or Every Student Succeeds Act website. Lucy Calkins is based on balanced literacy, which we did discuss tonight, which doesn't address the needs of the 1 in 5 students with learning differences in our classrooms. Balanced literacy instruction encourages students to use word analogies and pictures or contexts to identify words. It is focused on shared reading, guided reading, and independent reading. Although many young readers would master expressive and receptive language skills from repeated exposure alone, as suggested by balanced literacy, there is a population of students for whom this is not sufficient. Words Their Way is designed for use with students with learning disabilities and any student at risk of academic failure. It does include phonological awareness, phonics, word study, vocabulary, and spelling, but again, this program does not meet the ESSA standards. I'm speaking tonight to ask the District to strongly consider a pilot program in structured literacy. Structured literacy is explicit, systematic teaching that focuses on phonological awareness, word recognition, phonics and decoding, spelling and syntax at the sentence and paragraph levels. Structured literacy avoids making potentially erroneous assumptions about what students are naturally capable of implicitly learning. By explicitly teaching all concepts, students who readily internalize the patterns of language will learn quickly and easily, and those who otherwise may struggle will get the instruction they need for success. Moreover, these students are more likely to be identified if specific weaknesses arise in their foundational language skills. Best of all, it can be used in general education classrooms to meet the needs of all students. Thanks so much for your time tonight. If you'd like to learn more about common reading problems, types of assessments that, that can help identify individual difficulties and interventions based on different types of reading difficulties, Dr. David Kilpatrick will be discussing these topics during a free webinar next Wednesday, November 13th, from 4 to 5, and I have the details, it's free for anyone to sign up.
Thank you for your comments, and if you'd like to leave that information with us, you're welcome to do so.
This is the website and this is the information on what are.
Great. Thank you.
Holly, I actually have a question, I don't know if it's for Kathy or Jody, related to the comments that I held back from asking earlier, but when I attended the parent advisory meeting for special ed last year, there was an overwhelming sort of urgency and complaints about reading in the district for those kids that fall sort of in that gap where special education isn't really going to help them. And we talked a lot about structured literacy as a concept. There was a steering committee put together, and there was a lot of energy around the concept of having a committee to look at reading, and, and I was just told this week that the administration de-prioritized that particular committee. So I don't know if it was just sort of framed the wrong way by the person who told me that, so I just wanted to check in about that, because I was really disappointed to hear that.
So that's not true. There's a group of teachers who are actually working on reviewing our reading program specifically for special education students at the K-5 level, or is it K-8?
Your group that was together was K-8.
K-8, that's what I thought.
Okay, but so separate from the parent advisory committee that was going to bolster that discussion, I suppose.
At the parent advisory committee, well, we talked about the different groups we were putting together, and that is one of those groups, and it has had its first meeting, where we really worked on a lot of that, and it is continuing, yes. No, I'm not sure we're in the middle of that yet.
Okay, we'll talk offline, but that's better to hear. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Do you have anyone else? Next on the agenda, Item 6, Action Items. A, Finance Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Finance Action Items, 1 through 3.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll just thank the Glenmont PTA for the donation for the outdoor storage shed. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. B, Professional Personnel Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Professional Personnel Action Items, 1 through 9.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item C, Support Personnel, Support Personnel Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Support Staff Action Items, 1 through 14.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, Other Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Action Items, 1 through 4.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. This point, recognition of visitors on non-agenda items. If we have any visitors with us tonight who would like to speak on a non-agenda item, now would be the time to come to the microphone. Seeing no one, moving on to Item 8, our future meetings and events. On Wednesday, November 13th, at 8:00 a.m., we have a meeting scheduled with Senator Breslin and Assembly Member Fahy at the high school, and then at 6:00 p.m. in the evening, we have a policy committee meeting also at the high school. Our next board meeting is on Wednesday, November 20th, at Hammagrail Elementary School, starting at 7:00. We anticipate an executive session starting at 6:00 p.m. The meeting following that is on Wednesday, December 4th, and it looks like we will be at the high school, the LMC, newly opened, or possibly in the cafeteria?
I'm pretty sure it's going to be the cafeteria.
Okay, so in the high school.
Somewhere in the high school.
Someplace.
We were trying, we were hopeful that we could be there, but it's not looking nobody.
Again, starting at 7:00, anticipating an executive session starting at 6:00 p.m. And the meeting after that on Wednesday, December 18th, in the high school, specific location to be determined. And again, starting at 7:00, anticipating executive session starting at 6:00 p.m. Not seeing any reason to go back into executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Pig students, come on up, you guys.